Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's town council meeting. The mayor will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for members of the council to receive questions from registered electors of the town before the formal meeting commences. When providing your name and address prior to addressing the meeting, please confirm or otherwise that you consent to your personal details being recorded in the minutes. Your personal data will be processed as directed by GDPR Article 5. This meeting will be recorded and will be made available on the Town Council YouTube channel. The whole of the meeting will be recorded except where there are confidential or exempt items. If any member of the public has an objection to being filmed, please make yourself known to the mayor or the town clerk before the start of the meeting. Can we take question, councillor Perkin?
I was just going to check that the member of the public was connecting to audio through most of what you just said. I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of what you had just said.
Have we checked that?
I think the member of the public is connected by telephone.
Hello. Who have we got there? Sarah, Sarah Jeffries.
It's Brian Jeffries. Hello there.
It's not Sarah at all. It's Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Hello there.
Have a question. Good evening.
Hello. Sorry, I'm a bit late.
Don't worry. Have you a question for us this evening?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it was Brian Jeffries from the Solar Cycle Way.
Oh, yes.
Hello there.
I think the council will know you. Yes, we've all had an email, haven't we?
Fantastic. Yeah, it was just a quick update. Obviously, I didn't know. It's just to obviously get feedback from the suggestion. Hopefully, you saw the email and you've seen the website and you've seen the press side of things as well. And it's just obviously trying to get some feedback and hopefully some positive feedback and getting some views of how we can actually take this forward and, you know, take it on to the next step to hold the developer accountable for what it needs to do for the community. So, yeah, just trying to get feedback initially for what you think of the idea.
Right. Have we got councillor, councillor Saunders? Might you have a comment for that?
I will speak to it. Yeah, I had a telephone conversation with Brian last week where he was taking me through some of the details of the proposal. I think obviously we're not at this moment able to just launch into a discussion about the merits of the scheme, but I think it would be a good idea for us to have a discussion probably through via a motion to the next town council meeting to confirm that we want to support the proposal and help, you know, the community in lobbying for this with the developer. So certainly I would be happy, I think, to bring a proposal forward. I still need to do a bit more reading about the detail of what's planned, but I think I think that's probably a good way forward for us to have a proper debate at the next town council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Perkin.
Councillor Hook was before me.
Oh, I haven't got councillor Hook on my screen. That's why I'm not seeing him on my councillor hook.
After I think it's a great idea. And what we could also do, Mr. Jeffries may not be aware, we quite frequently at town council meetings have a presentation by a guest before the meeting starts. It doesn't have to be very long, 10, 15 minutes. Sometimes they have been much longer. And I wonder if it would be a good idea at our next monthly meeting, if you'd like to, Mr. Jeffries or someone else, to make such a presentation just to explain where the route would go, how it would work, the advantages of it, which I fully see and fully but the advantages of it, although it's technically a presentation to the town council, obviously it's a public meeting. So the word could be spread on social media and otherwise, and it can be effectively a presentation to the whole town for anyone who's interested in the town to come and see. So I think people will be very interested in it.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Jeffries?
That's absolutely fantastic. You know, just bearing in mind at this stage, it is a conceptual idea. And so, you know, everything that we've proposed so far is up for negotiation, you know. You know, I think there, you know, there may be some feedback from some people to say that, you know, they don't, that it can affect the wildlife, you know. Now, what I want, what I want to happen is that this needs to be done in a completely managed way. So it's important that we speak to the relevant parties now. From my point of view, you know, I've been campaigning for this for the last two years and I've done a presentation at the planning inspector. So it's not, it's not that I've come at this completely, you know, new. I made the assumption that the solar park was going to happen, you know. I didn't want it to happen. I live, I happen to live, you know, 250 yards from where it's going to be. But I've been realistic enough to realise that if someone's going to invest or say that they're going to invest £400 million in the community, you know, they're not going to go forward with that without, you know, realising that they're going to get the planning permission. Now, it was important, I was trying to stress two years ago that what happens if the solar park does go ahead, what is, you know, what is plan B when at the time everyone was very much, no, we don't want it. And I get that, but there was actually nothing, you know, there was no alternative. And it struck me two years ago when I'd done this presentation that, you know, it fell on deaf ears at the planning inspector because it looked as though I was in support of the solar farm. I wasn't, you know. What I wanted was something for the community and that is the thing I can't stress enough. And again, I'm not asking for something that's unrealistic. The infrastructure is already there. Yes, there are hurdles to overcome. We need to get Kent wildlife, we've got Kent wildlife on board. We need to get the, you know, it does go through a site of scientific interest, I understand that, but there's ways that we can get around that. Those are hurdles that we can actually get over. And the route is actually very similar to where the Saxon Shore Way is. But what I've tried to do is do it in such a way that it is actually separate. So you can have walkers and you can have cyclists separate, but this is actually at the, you know, to the side of the Saxon Shore Way. So yes, I'd love to do a presentation and give you some further background and, you know, I just, what I'm struggling with currently at the moment is I'm struggling with Swallowborough Council, I'm struggling with Kent County Council to actually hear me, you know, to actually, you know, and hence why now I've got a team of people around me that have started this website up. We've got over 500 supporters in two weeks that have signed up to the website. Now, for me, one of the big things that the developer said at the time was that there wasn't support for it. And one of the reasons was is because it was, it was perceived to be supporting the solar park. But now the plans, now the permission has been granted, I need to hold the developer to account on this. Now, at every stage, the developer is saying that, well, you know, we've been in communication with local residents and all that kind of stuff. That's been garbage, right? And now, and what's happened now, up until that stage where they didn't have phone permission, yes, they were sending emails back and forth. As soon as they got the planning permission, they put the phone down on me and have been arrogant and rude and have not even, and not even wanted to entertain the idea. And but what I need to do is I need to find a positive message. And I don't, I don't want the negativity that's followed this solar park for the last two years. I'm trying to have a really positive, because let's face it, the developer doesn't have to do it, but it's my job to make sure that they do. And it's, and I need to try and sort of get that positive energy out there so people can help me to get that done and speak to the relevant people. All right.
And Mr. Jeffrey, you will come to our next meeting and do a presentation. I think what I'm hearing is everyone was really, the majority was so opposed to Cleopil, they didn't want to listen to anything else. They just wanted to keep opposing. Now, you are saying it is going to happen, nothing we can do about it, but let's find something positive out of it. And I think that's my understanding. So can we have a presentation at the next town council meeting, which is on, oh councillor Perkin there, do we?
Thank you. Firstly, I just want to say thank you for bringing the proposal to town council. I think it's really interesting. It's a really, really positive sounding campaign. I fully support the idea in principle, fully support it. And I'm really glad that you've got Kent Wildlife Trust on board as well. The only, the only question that I would ask is around the wildlife mitigation that has been raised by members of CPRE. And it would be just be really helpful for me as an individual if you'd be able to feed back on anything that you've received from CPRE at the next meeting, if that would be helpful, if that would be possible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, without a doubt on that, up until this point, they're not supporting it. And they've, they've made that clear in the dialogue. What's happened is that they're saying that it's going to be, you know, it's too, it's too much for the wildlife to handle, yet Kent Wildlife Trust interestingly said that because it's, because this has been a plan of national significance, it means that if we come up with the, you know, the right scheme, it actually overcomes a lot of hurdles because this, this was a plan of national significance. If it was a local plan, it would be harder to overcome those hurdles. But because the local planning has actually been taken out of the equation in this, it now becomes, it now becomes easier in lots of ways to actually justify the argument that because this is a plan of national significance, obviously the solar farm, that by actually implementing this cycle plan, it can overcome a lot of the argument. And there's almost a sort of an irony here that obviously there are a million solar panels going on this bit of land. And what, what I'm kind of like asking for, there's, there's, there is currently a farm track there, there is currently an existing track that is used currently by cyclists. It's not fit for purpose, obviously. There's lots of skies that you have to take your bike over and all that kind of stuff. And, and in theory, we're not supposed to be using it, you know. Obviously, I take my three kids down there, you know, you have the trailers on the back and it's very, very difficult to do. But I'm confident that I can, and with the team that I have around me, I can overcome that the argument from the, from the CPRE stating about the wildlife because, again, expressing exactly where the route goes is very important. The, how can I say this in a diplomatic way? There was, there is someone that lives very local to me, who is from the CPRE and is passionate like myself about their, about their thing. But I feel that the, I feel that what's come back from the CPRE is, is not representative of their organisation. I don't, I'm trying to say that diplomatically as I can. So I need, it's my job to pursue that and it's our job to pursue that. But I just feel that, that we as an organisation can overcome the objections that have come forward to us. And this is the whole point. You know, what I'm saying to these organisations is I don't have the answers, I don't have every, every single part. I need people to work with me to overcome the objections, to, you know, overcome the hurdles. What I don't appreciate is them, is people saying, no, we're not, we're not interested in the idea, put the phone down. I'm not interested in that. What I'm interested in is people helping me to overcome the objections, you know, to overcome these hurdles. Because if someone says no to me, they have to justify and back it up. And at this point, I don't think they have. And it's my job to justify the proposal and to make sure that the, that the, you know, the route that we're suggesting is clear. One of the ideas now, I'm trying to get a drone to actually to follow the exact route of where the proposed cycle way would go. Because I just think that from Faversham people's point of view and from Witschball people's point of view, if they can see actually something tangible and actually see exactly where the route is and what it is exactly like today, they can then, you know, perceive what it's going to be like in the future. And I think that's one of the things that I'm sort of trying, that I'm working on at the moment. So, so your question there, Hannah, was, you know, to sort of express where the route is to go. I think that is my next objective and to try and get that on the website so actually people can see, well, it actually does make sense, you know. I'm not, as I said, I'm not asking for a zip wire to go from Witschball to Faversham. I'm asking for something that, that the infrastructure or a lot of the infrastructure is already there. And part, but the reason I'm doing this as well is, is it's not, there's been mitigation for the wildlife in this process, a lot of mitigation for the wildlife, which is fantastic. I get that. But there's one thing missing here and that is the mitigation for the humans, you know. The Headhill Road and Seesorter Road is currently one of the most dangerous roads locally for cyclists. And what concerns me is that when the 100 HGVs and LGV lorries go up and down that road every day, this is only going to get worse. So there's been plenty of mitigation for the, for the wildlife and animals, which I completely accept and I understand, but there's no mitigation for the safety of the residents of Gravely, of the schoolchildren of Gravely when it comes to the school, of the people that use the cycle path, there's no mitigation. And there hasn't been any mitigation, the developer at no stage has put any mitigation forward to that. So what I'm actually saying to the developer, oh, sorry, sorry.
Mr. Jeffrey, sorry, I'm going to have to be very diplomatic. I was told each speaker is allowed three minutes. I think we probably.
No, I appreciate that. I'm sorry.
We get your passion and you've got to have a passionate person leading a project. So December the 7th is our next town council meeting. If you'd like to come along and do a 10 minute, 15 minute presentation, that would be.
That would be in person with that, Mrs. Reynolds? That would be at the town hall or?
No, I think we're still, well, yes, we'll still be on a lockdown.
Okay. Then that's fine, but you must stay with me. I'm completely out of my comfort zone here, as you can probably tell. So I'm trying my best in the presentation.
Well done.
But no problems. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, well done, well done. And we'll have the presentation on the 7th. I presume the town clerk, will you invite?
Councillor Barker wishes to speak, Mayor.
Oh, councillor Barker, sorry.
I was just waving goodbye and thanking him for his efforts.
Yeah.
Your hand is raised. Shall I lower it?
So thank you very much, Mr. Jeffries. I think we certainly get the passion you've got and I think we're hopefully on board with it as well. Thank you. Good evening. And are there any other questions now? Any other members of the public with a three minute question?
No, I understand there's no further questions.
Thank you. So we can move on to the agenda, can we now? Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, item one are apologies, which we have.
I've had them from councillor BJ Martin and, oh, I'm just bringing in another member of the public. I don't know if they will want to ask a question, but I've had apologies from councillors BJ Martin and Jackson.
Fine. Shall we check with the public before we move on? No one's coming in with a question. No more questions from the public? No?
No, appears not.
Move on with the agenda. Item two, declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest. Members who have an interest to declare on any item on the agenda must declare the existence in nature of it at the start of the meeting and act in accordance with the council's code of conduct, S27 Localism Act 2011. No pecuniary interest. Item three, previous minutes and matters arising to accept as a true record the minutes town council meeting held on the 5th of October. Councillor Martin.
I propose that we accept these as a true record, madam mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Williams. Are we all happy? Can we vote on that? Yes, thank you. Oh, we're up to mayor's announcement. Very quickly, very quickly. October's been brilliant, no matter what. I spent two mornings going out to various schools and it was amazing. The head teachers were just so positive. All their staff were communicating, cooperating with the new normal. Obviously, at this point, I thanked them for how far they got with it, but didn't know what the next half term would be. And we still don't know, but they're all so positive. So that was great. And I had an interview Zoom with Matt Betts, Feast of St Jude's. Obviously, they couldn't come, so we had a Zoom call, not sure what we'd do. But their theme for this year, I think, is really important. Their theme is hope and that is what we've got to do at this time. The carnival kept the flame alight, window competition, spotting competition, which I've done for years and love doing with my great niece. They had a raffle and then we walked the Queen and her, two of her princesses just round the town square and it brought a lot of smiles to people and cheered up that dreary day. Oh, as did Saturday. I think most of you were around when Spiderman visited Faversham quite unexpectedly. There were lots of children with happy faces and the parents were pleased, taking photographs. It is amazing who you might see in Faversham and unexpected. Then I went Friday evening to the recreation ground and visited the trailer with Dan Cochrane and the helpers there. It is going to be an amazing project when we can get the bus, the trailer out to the young people, to the youth in their areas, on their estates. A mobile unit going out will just be amazing. But at the moment, obviously Covid is holding all that back, but it's there on the back burner and I think will be fantastic for the youth. I wish to congratulate the councillors and volunteers who've contributed to many hours of valuable time to prepare, display and engage with the community on two major issues, 20s plenty and the neighbourhood plan. And, and very grateful to Brian Payne and the Eye newspaper, again, giving the community another opportunity to see exactly what the neighbourhood plan is about. So a big thank you there. And of course, Steve Sherlock, great cheer when I saw them on the Sunday putting the lights off. They have managed three weeks, can't complete the next two, can't do the big decorations, clearly hoping for a Christmas tree, just with lights on. But even that, I said to them, is amazing. It will light up our town when we're all walking around exercising mainly. It will bring cheer on gloomy days. What else have I been to? The Faversham Society, the musical, the history, 50 years history of Faversham, there is now a DVD and it is called Our Beautiful Faversham, Our Beautiful Town, actually. And I purchased one off to Australia that's called My Daughter is So Into the History of Faversham. And if you're looking for little gifts for people for Christmas, I think it will be good. And what have we got here? Oh, two retired members of our community sat every day last week in the town square getting signatures for children to have a free meal during school holidays. They're both retired and they've got over 600 signatures. There seem so many people at the moment playing different parts in the community, which is amazing, amazing to see. And I think my role as the mayor is just to go out and keep saying, thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that. I need to mention very quickly the sad loss of Mr. Magic. I would like to know just how many balloons he created for our children over the years, the animals, the stores. He was fantastic. It must be thousands and thousands of memories out there. He will be sadly missed. And then we've got, very quickly, and I think we've just all got to stay positive. We're obviously in another difficult phase coming up, but we've got to keep believing that Faversham will beat this. And if we all work together, I'm absolutely convinced we will. So that's my announcement. Thank you very much. Now, if we could have policy and finance committee, I think that will be councillor Barker.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you.
This is no word of a lie. I've just developed a cough and my wife's got a temperature and we're going for Covid test tomorrow, so thankfully we're all in the same room.
We can't edit through the computer there. We are all right.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's just.
Oh, I hope you haven't got it, no.
Nevertheless, three matters to report really from the, from the policy and finance committee. I wander through those and then there are three recommendations that were made to the council, which we'll all need to vote on. So I'll take us through each of those individually. The three areas to note really are firstly that the town clerk and the economic development officer, that's probably not her title now, have both already contribution, contributing to work in progress reports, which I think have been sort of significant advancement in how we manage our agenda and activity in office. And I'm really pleased about those and they're very helpful. So thank you to the town clerk and EDO. The second element is the website. So we agreed a month or so ago to move our website from our current vendor to a provider called Zonkey after looking at a couple of different alternatives. And that, that's in train now and we expect that to complete before Christmas. And the benefits of that are kind of more, it's easier to update for the, which is which is really helpful to us and hopefully and importantly, more easy to consume and to search and to manage for the town and the residents. So that will come online just before Christmas. And, and last but not least, community grants. We agreed on a structure of reporting to, to help us decide what grants are allocated where we opened up our community grants late this year after, after closing them just before, just around lockdown as, so we could allocate money accordingly. But we've opened up the grant process now and we have a proper scoring matrix to allow us to decide which grants we should allocate funding to, which really just aligns the grant criteria and to certain categories and scoring so that we can, we can evaluate them properly against one another. Other than that, we have three recommendations coming from the policy and finance to town council, which we will have to vote on. The first of which is called supporting the renewal of the town offer and is a piece of work that was undertaken initially by councillor Saunders and the officers have contributed an awful lot of time and effort to, as well as other council members, but primarily under the guidance of councillor Saunders. And I'd like to thank him, thank you for that work. Initially, it was during the height of the first lockdown to look at and think about what public assets we have that we really want to try and maintain and protect through what could be then and has since proven to be true, a kind of a long economic impact of Covid. And councillor Saunders and, and the, and the officers then embarked on a piece of work engaging various elements of the town and, and looking at particular, you know, assets that we have as a, as a community. So everything from the cinema and swimming pools and so on, to look at what, what the town could do to ensure that it kind of preserved, preserve those, those assets. The culmination of that work was an investigation. And the culmination of, of that work was an investigation into a, a town lottery, which, assuming we, we push this sufficiently, and I believe we all should really get behind this, will, will allow us to run a lottery through a third party organisation. And the, the benefits of that are that the community can take a considerable amount of the, of the profits of that, of that process. Clearly, there'll be prizes for those that engage, but the profits will be distributed amongst the, the good causes that we choose to participate with. And I probably want to hand over to, to councillor Saunders at that point, in case he wants to, to add any thoughts before, before I read the recommendations and we, and we move to debate and vote. Councillor Saunders, anything you'd like to add?
Well, very briefly, I think at this stage, what if, if you look at the recommendation, there are four, or there are five things that are being recommended. Basically, the, the, the key one, I suppose, is reallocating some of our existing events budget, which is for obvious reasons only spent this year, to a new budget line for, for a lottery. And that £5,000 there is, will be the cost to us in setting up a lottery. The provider of the lottery we're planning to work with is called Gatherwell and they work with about 70 local authorities across the country, but quite a number of borough councils within Kent. We just have to have a licence that would be, that would come from Swale. And what we put in the proposal to the Policy and Finance Committee is that we come back with a project plan to the next meeting of Policy and Finance. I think the final thing to a recommendation here is probably the most crucial one. As councillor Barker said, if we're going to do this, we all need to really get behind it and, and make it work. I think there's loads of potential because of the strength of the local community, but it does need us all to be really behind it if we're going to pursue it. So I'd encourage you to support the recommendation and get behind the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Saunders. And so, I mean, councillor Saunders has pretty much run through the recommendation, but it is that the town council agrees to reallocate some of £5,060 from the events budget and for a Faversham and District Lottery Fund to give authority to the town clerk to enter into a contract with Gatherwell Limited as our external lottery provider, to give authority to the town clerk to enter into a licensing agreement with Swellborough Council for running the lottery, to review an initial plan for the implementing of the next, next meeting, which, which will do the policy finance meeting, and that all members play a part in making the lottery successful. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts before we move to vote? I know that there's a, a good few here that are already on the Policy and Finance Committee, but, but a couple that weren't able to make it. Any thoughts, questions or comments? Councillor Perkin?
Yeah, just to thank councillor Saunders and the officers for the work that they've done bringing this forward. I think it's a really good opportunity to have some good community building going on.
Thank you, councillor Perkin. Any other thoughts councillor Owen? Councillor Owen, I think you might still be on mute.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll start again. Obviously, I could make policy and finance last week. I'm also aware that the last time, or when this was initially proposed, I did have some reservations with respect to use of a lottery and, and this relationship with gambling. I have spoken with the town clerk around this and, and she's given me quite a number of reassurances in terms of how it works, how it's targeted, how people participate and so on. So I'm, I'm quite happy to. I've put my support behind it, as you suggest.
Thank you councillor Owen. Any other thoughts, questions or comments? Otherwise, I will move to the and I'm happy councillor Saunders, I assume you want to propose. I'm happy to second.
Yeah, I'm happy to propose councillor Barker.
And I'm happy to, to second. Can we all take a vote, please? All those in favour, please raise your hands. I've got councillor Thomas, councillor Martin, councillor Hook, councillor Williams, councillor Reynolds, councillor Perkin, councillor Saunders and councillor Owen and myself. That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. The second of the three areas I'd like to draw our attention to is number 178 on the Policy and Finance Agenda, which is the proposal to rescind a previous motion where we had agreed to put some vinyls on the front windows of 12 Marketplace. Apologies, I'm going to cough. And the initial proposal was, of course, to, to put some maps and various other liveries on the front of 12 Marketplace that meant that when it was lit up inside, supposedly you could see into the, into the premise. But when it wasn't, it would, you know, show useful material like maps on the outside. I think on further investigation, it, it wasn't, you weren't able to see into the, the town hall as much. And there were some other considerations, which meant it was, it was reviewed at Policy and Finance and the Policy and Finance Committee felt predominantly that, that we should actually rescind the motion to, to put vinyls up. And we aren't, we weren't at a sufficiently advanced stage of the commercial contracts to, to actually have paid for them. So it's recommended that the town council agrees to rescind those. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts before I move to vote? I can't see any.
Councillor Martin. Councillor Martin, yeah.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you councillor Barker. I just wanted to add into the conversation on that. One of the main reasons is that we were, the advice that we were initially given, that we would not require planning permission, came back saying, well, actually, as it's a listed building, you'd require listed building consent. And, and obviously, given the planning process and given where we are with other projects, it's felt that by the time we got planning permission, we might want to change what was in the windows anyway. So that's the reason for proposing a rescind motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin. Any other thoughts or questions? In which case, I'm happy to propose rescind that initial motion on the vinyls. Anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Martin. Can we move to vote? All those in favour? Is that an abstention councillor Reynolds?
Yes.
An abstention councillor Reynolds in favour, councillor Saunders, councillor Martin, councillor Owen, councillor Thomas, councillor Perkin, councillor Williams, councillor Hook. You're in favour too. Thank you. And the, the final area for us to discuss and agree was around an ethical procurement report. So the town clerk presented a report around ethical procurement, which, which makes sense. The report broadly kind of outlined conditions under which it was, you know, difficult to necessarily consider ethical procurement. And those might be, you know, very small purchases and, and those might need to be taken quickly and so on. It was, it was a well-rounded and grounded report, which I, which I liked. But, but there are probably a couple of things that it, it needed to consider before we openly adopted it, one of which was considerations around the climate emergency and environmental issues and what impact they should have on our procurement processes. And as a consequence, it was felt that we should quickly, this doesn't have to be a, a mountain of work, but that we should look to have a small working group of, of one or two, three or four people to consider what those policies might be and to consider the wider policy around and, and then present that to the, to the wider council. So the, the recommendation is that we agree to set up a, an ethical procurement working group. I'm happy to, to sit on that working group, should it be formed. And I think it would, you know, just we'd need one or two members. I would probably represent more of the kind of commercial considerations than I would potentially the climate emergency. And I guess firstly, the recommendation, does anyone disagree that we should be forming a working group to, to formulate an, an ethical procurement policy? All those in favour of setting up a working group, please raise your hand now. That's everyone in favour. Thank you. And I think the next thing to do would be to, to gather a list of people that would happily sit on that working group. Do you have any, any volunteers other than myself to be included? That's councillor Perkin and councillor Williams. And that's probably more than sufficient. And councillor Reynolds, thank you. And those were the three areas to discuss from the Policy and Finance Committee minutes. Town clerk, is there anything else that we needed to cover that I might have missed?
Could I, you proposed the working group. Could I just have a seconder for the group, please?
Councillor Perkin. Right. And I'm sorry, there was one other thing which I forgot, which, which somehow escaped these minutes. And one of the things we did talk about was the need for a workshop, a budget workshop to cover next year, to cover next year's budget. I believe a doodle poll has gone round. I would urge you all to fill in dates and times that you can make for that workshop or, or one or two workshops if we need to split it up because of time. But it's, it's this time of year that we need to kind of consolidate our thinking around what, what each of the committees are going to require and what the budget for next year should be. So support of that would be very helpful. And that is it for me. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Item six, Faversham Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group. I think councillor Owen. Is he mute again?
Councillor Owen, I know I'm here. I was, I was waiting for my, for my oral introduction. Thank you very much. So good news, there's no recommendations from, from the group to vote on. But just, just to give you a couple of highlights from the meeting itself, I, I think most of you are aware, because I think virtually all of you participated in the neighbourhood plan exhibitions. So we closed the second exhibition on Saturday. So we had two, two-week exhibitions. And I'd just like to thank all of you who, who participated in them, regardless of what, what your role was. Some people wrote, some people invigilated, some people helped set up, take down and so on. So thanks very much for doing that. It was a significant piece of work on everyone's part. And the, again, madam mayor mentioned this already, but we did have an article, we had a whole, whole, whole special edition of the Faversham, which came out on Thursday of last week. I just, I really just wanted to raise one point on it because I know during the exhibition itself, we had at least one visitor who asked how much all this was costing. And I think it's important that we put the record straight on it. So the Faversham special edition was published free of charge. It cost council not a single penny to make it happen. So again, I'd like to thank Mr Payne for giving us that opportunity to do that. And of course, you know, if there are any questions regarding the, the funding of the neighbourhood plan and neighbourhood plan efforts, we, we can make those available. The, the other sort of significant point of note, and I think most, most of you are aware of this already, but the local plan panel, panel at Swellborough Council has voted to from Swell officers with respect to the site selection or the site allocation. Obviously, you know, as, as a neighbourhood plan steering group, we, we were disappointed in terms of the volume of housing that, that Faversham has to take on board. But we, we were pleased that the allocations geographically were pretty much in line with, with our preferences, which was to the southeast and east of the town. So they're probably the, the, the best least, or the, the best, least worst places that they could be if they had to be anywhere else. One final point, it's just a point from the minutes. And I raise it simply because I think it has some degree of relevance to our next topic, which is the motion proposed by councillor Williams. I think it's important to report it to the wider group. We wrote on two equations to members of Cabinet at Swellborough Council requesting a meeting with respect to the housing numbers and with respect to the site allocation. The first correspondence was ignored. And on the second correspondence, we received a reply from an officer rather than, than the actual, the person to whom the letter was addressed, indicating that they did not have the time to meet with us. So we are incredibly disappointed about that. I think making Faversham work, making the Faversham neighbourhood plan work, and all aspects of Faversham relies on the next level of local government, i.e. Swellborough Council respecting Faversham Town Council and their views and perspectives. So I think this is a pattern of behaviour which is clearly developing, but I just wanted to raise it because, like I say, I think it is relevant to the next topic. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Owen. And item seven, town centre road closures, a motion by councillor Williams.
Thank you very much. And so I'll just read the motion out just for those that haven't seen the, the full motion. So the motion is that Faversham Town Council would like to express its disappointment at the recommendation to Swell Borough Council to change the road closure times hasn't been acknowledged and that the road closure is still having an adverse effect on disabled people accessing the town centre. We would therefore write to the cabinet member of Swellborough Council to request an official update from Swellborough Council on the situation regarding the road closure times and what actions Swellborough Council plans to take to mitigate adverse effect on disabled people. I, I would just like to provide a bit of context because obviously, this has been a big, big situation, a big issue that, that we've had to deal with. And I just want to give some context to this motion and why I bought it this evening. So the road closures were initially put in place to allow the safe opening of businesses in the town centre, which allowed the public to be able to socially distance more effectively and businesses to manage queuing in a socially distanced way. This is a legitimate concern of which I believe was the correct course of action at the time. The town council made a recommendation at the time to both Kent County Council, who are the highway authority, and Swellborough Council, who are responsible business recovery. And this was something that Swellborough Council implemented across the borough. As we have grown to live with Covid restrictions, businesses have made significant adaptations at a heavy cost in many cases to their way of working. And people that access the town have had to adapt to the way that they shop and use local facilities. Clearly, coronavirus hasn't gone away and keeping people safe is a clear priority. It's become clear, however, that after talking to business owners and disabled residents, the road closure as it stood created a disadvantage to some businesses in the form of deliveries and disabled access, of which there wasn't adequate mitigation at the time. This was discussed at an extraordinary meeting of the town council on the 21st of July with an outcome to reduce the road closure hours to 10 till three on market days and 10 till two on non-market days. The recommendation was sent to Swale, back to business team by the town clerk the next day. However, to this date, the changes in the closure times have yet to be put in place or no formal acknowledgement, this recommendation has been received. I believe that going into the winter months with less footfall to the town centre and less use of space for outside dining that are correct, so the current road closures of 10 to four inadequate and are unfairly disadvantaged in residents who need to access shops with disabilities and businesses who need to receive deliveries of access to their businesses to deliver to their customers. With the second lockdown only a couple of days away, it's very important now that businesses that can operate with a click and collect or delivery service are able to function to keep their businesses afloat, but also providing vital services to the community. Social distancing will now not be such a major consideration this period due to the closure of many businesses during this time. I'd like to thank the work that councillor Perkin and Thomas have done at Swale and working at better mitigation measures and being advocates to this issue raised by residents and businesses in Faversham. Therefore, this proposal looks to reiterate that dialogue. Therefore, this proposal looks to reiterate that dialogue needed by Swale to the town council to work forward in the best possible way for the people of Faversham under what is extremely difficult and challenging times for businesses and those who are vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Anyone with any comments? Councillor Perkin, was that your hand? No?
I'm councillor Thomas, but then I would like to speak after councillor Thomas, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thomas, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the wording of this motion as it stands, and I'd like to also add a comment and a little bit more background to what's been going on. Now, as chair of this town council's Public Spaces Committee, I contacted the cabinet member for the economy property, that's councillor Monique Bonney, and asked that she visit Faversham to walk through the issues we at Faversham Town Council would like addressed by Swaboura Council. And I'm pleased that she took up my offer and she did visit the town on Friday the 25th of September. So subsequently from that visit, the Swaboura Council have provided the four planters that you've seen put at Court Street Gates and East Street Gates. And the reason for that was that both of these gates were being dangerously bypassed when they were closed. And I know that a number of members of this town council had raised that as a problem. I've also informed that Swaboura Council are drawing up clearer and more coherent signage for the gates. And again, some of that came from members of this town council who'd highlighted and had ideas on how those signs could be and should be improved. We're still waiting on that, but I'm told it is in the pipeline. Now, I too have brought to the attention of councillor Bonney the recommendations of this council to suggest to Swaboura Council that the closure times of the gates be amended to 10 till 2 on non-market days and 10 to 3 on market days, and that was to facilitate disabled access. So I'm therefore disappointed that Faversham Town Council, via our town clerk, has not received any official acknowledgement from either officers at Swaboura Council nor councillor Bonney, following the email sent by our town clerk on the 22nd of July on the matter of this town council's recommendation, which we agreed on Tuesday the 21st of July. Now, having said that, I will continue to work constructively with councillor Bonney and continue to lobby and press the issues of concern for Faversham and its residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I also today contacted councillor Knight, who's a borough councillor, just to find out where we are with this. And she said, thank you for your call, I've investigated this and found an email that went out to Tim, FDA, Chris Williams, Hook, Irwin and Perkin and the newspaper on the 30th of October. Swaboura Council are still awaiting a KCC decision. So I think this is why we possibly haven't heard officially exactly what's going to happen. So do we need to write and just say, when will KCC make their final decision? When are we likely to know? That's my comment on it. I also spend a lot of time in town. And for those of you last week, half term, the amount of pushchairs, the amount of wheelchairs, sit and ride mobility scooters, I don't think we've asked these people and they're not making any fuss. And I actually think it's quite popular, I do think the hours should be changed, I've always felt that. But I think the majority, if we need to go out and survey everyone, there was a disability forum, I think, was going to happen, I don't know what the response was to that. And the couple that sat in town all week, last week, drove, parked in a disabled bay. He had a little mobility scooter that he unfolded to come through, his wife had a push along frame, and actually I asked them what they felt, happy with the roads being closed, but they wanted one or two more disabled bays. I think that Friday, Saturday, there's not enough bays, Monday to Thursday perhaps. So if we could add those bays that we talked about early on, I think that would be helpful. Any other comments? Councillor Saunders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I think it's disappointing that Swalborough Council hasn't formally responded to the town council, but I think as has been identified in the discussion, there has been a lot of informal discussion going on. And I think both councillor Perkin and councillor Thomas have actually been involved in the Swale Cabinet Subcommittee that's been looking at these road closures. And I know, you know, there's also been dialogue with the officers that are involved. So I don't think that means that we shouldn't write and ask for a formal response, but I think it's worth noting. I'm afraid I'm not totally happy with the wording of this motion. I can, some of the things that you picked up on, Madam Mayor, I can happily accept that the present closure hours do impact on disabled access to facilities in the town centre. But I don't, I think the statement that there's an adverse effect on disabled people as a result of the road closures is an assertion. I think there are numbers of disabled people who actually find it easier to move around as a result of the road closures, because they're not having to watch out for vehicles. So if someone's people have got sight or hearing problems, they're enabled by the road closures. And I think we have to remember that these closures are in place because of the pandemic. And the pandemic has come back very fiercely, it's caught hold in parts of Swale. So it's not disappeared, and the road closures have helped keep the town safe. And, you know, we know that pandemic is very discriminatory towards people with disabilities and health conditions. So I would feel happier about the motions if we could just remove, in both cases, the word adverse, and stick with the fact that it has an effect on disabled people accessing the town centre, which I think it clearly does. So I'd like to propose that as an amendment, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Councillor Perkin?
Thank you. I'd like to speak against that amendment, actually. I think that the word adverse is quite important in the discussion. I totally understand that this is not impacting everybody adversely, and I understand that as well it is adding to some people's appreciation of how safe they feel when they're moving around the town, totally appreciate that. But I think that from conversations that I've had with people who have significant mobility issues, people that have significant visual impairment, people that are elderly and infirm, people that have disabilities revolving around vertigo and things like that, and I've had numerous conversations with various people in the community that are reporting that it has had an adverse impact on them. And I think that to remove the word adverse would be letting those people down. Thank you.
Councillor Irwin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, councillor Hook's been waiting to speak, you may not be able to see him on your screen.
No, sorry, I've got him now, yes. So councillor Hook?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I want to support the motion, and I've a number of points I was going to make. First of all, I want to directly deal with some of the points you raised, because I think inadvertently the town council's been misled in what you have reported from someone who's not a member of this council. On the 30th of October, an email came from an officer to a number of councillors, but it did not say, and it's wholly misleading to say, that email said that this is all down to KCC to decide what to do. An email chain was begun by Tim Brown, who I think the council ought to appreciate and note its appreciation as a local businessman, as a member of the community, who has done a good job of making sure angles on this, sides of the argument that early on were not being heard, have been heard. And I think he's here, and I hope he hears my appreciation to him for that. He was asking the leader of the council whether changes that have been requested be considered, and the email said, from a Swale council officer to him, no, we are still working with KCC on this and have been working on it all week, it isn't straightforward. The suggestion that a full and thorough explanation has been provided to Mr Brown or members of this council is utterly rubbish. And I think that the cabinet member at Swales' conduct is deeply disappointing. It was way back, I think, in early September, the beginning of September, because we have our meetings the first Monday of each month. This town council came to a very carefully considered, weighing up lots of arguments both ways, position on how we would like the times of the road closure hours changed in a way, I think it was councillor Thomas who reminded us of what they were for market days and non-market days. And since then, way back in September, so what are we now, two and a bit months on, no substantive reply whatsoever, as far as I know, has come from the Swalborough Council, either an officer or the leader or cabinet member to this council saying, thank you, we agree with you, or we disagree with you for the following reasons. And it's a fundamental rule of good practice in local government or any government, that you give people reasons for the decision you're taking. They haven't even indicated to us what position they're taking. And it's very good that the cabinet member came over and had a walk around the town with councillor Thomas on the 25th, but I have written to her twice to invite her to meet with either a group of us or the whole town council. Initially, I suggested Tuesday the 28th, she wasn't busy that day, I went back to her, asked her to suggest any day that she would be available, and she has twice not even had the courtesy to answer me. So I think it's really disappointing. This town council is the representative body for the people of Faversham, and we suggested times which enabled a compromise. We recognise the fact that for some people, it's easier and safer to go in when the roads are closed, and for other people, it's easier and safer to go in when the roads are not closed. And the times we came up with enabled a balance, whereas at the moment, if you can only access a shop by a car, because you need to go from your car to your wheelchair, then you've only got one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, and we felt that was not quite the right balance. As far as we've seen, there's no evidence of any quality impact assessment, and we've not had any explanation for what position Swale are taking. So I think it's not good enough. I think the motion that councillor Williams has drafted is very reasonable and customarily tactful and diplomatic, and we should definitely pass it. This isn't about trying to have a go at any individual. We as a town council are only interested in the merits of an issue and how it affects our community. And I hope we can pass this motion and get soon very quickly a clear answer from Swale. And equally, it's actually the county council that will fundamentally sign off the order. Now, they have said up to now, we would do, they'd said exactly this, we would do whatever Swale asks us to do. I've got that in terms from Simon Jones, the director of highways. But I know there have been other towns in Kent where the leader of KCC has intervened and forced some changes, even though the district council in Monpark Kent didn't want it. And I think that the time has come for the town council to make Simon Jones, the director of highways, aware of our position, make a direct representation that the order should be amended in the way that we want and that we know our residents in Faversham want. But that's out with the terms of the motion, that's something we can do directly. On councillor Saunders' point about adverse, I mean, I think, in a sense, he makes a reasonable point that there probably are some disabled people that find the closed roads easier to navigate, and I fully accept that. But I think deleting the word then loses the equally important point that councillor Perkin, councillor Williams have made, that there are some disabled people, like the person who's wheelchair bound and needs to come by car, say to go to Optima Opticians or other places, will find difficulties. And I think if we leave the motion as it's been worded by councillor Williams, it fully encapsulates that it's good for some people and bad for others, and we need to find a fair balance between the two.
Thank you. Councillor Irwin?
Thank you. Well said, councillor Hook, I agree with everything you said. And actually, give me time to kind of reflect on it, because I was quite angry and wound up. But I still am, because one of the things that I did with some of my colleagues, councillor Perkin and councillor Williams, we went round businesses and asked them about the road closures, and in good faith, we said, if you have feedback, write to Back to Business at Swale, they will take your feedback into consideration and they will report back. I even wrote the email address down for people, and they didn't have, I think the first time we heard back was the 14th of September, and the town council received exactly the same communication as everyone else who wrote to Back to Business at swale.gov.uk. It's completely unacceptable. What I would say is, I think it's also important that, I completely agree with the discussions we've been having around the rights of disabled to access town and the adverse impact on at least some of those residents. I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact, though, that one of the reasons why we sought to adjust the timings in the first place was an adverse impact on businesses. Now, I acknowledge that we needed to close roads for public safety, but the fact is that actually, and this goes beyond the current motion, so I do apologise, but actually, given that we're just about to go into a second lockdown, and the fact that many, many of our businesses, as highlighted by councillor Williams, once again, in order to survive, are going to have to pivot their business model, they're going to have to start making deliveries as well as accepting deliveries, we should rethink it again, but that's for another time. However, I really do think that this is an important motion, we should express our dissatisfaction with the interactions we have with Swale. And, you know, we should revisit it and revisit it until we get a suitable answer. And I think what councillor Hook said in terms of contacting KCC directly is something we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else? No. So do we need to vote on that proposal? We've got a proposal and a second.
Madam Mayor, can we, sorry, can we just confirm that there isn't a second for the amendment? If there isn't, we will go straight to the main motion.
I would second the amendment.
Then we need to vote on the amendment then, please.
First, right, fine. Can we vote on the amendment? Thank you.
Can we just confirm who's against or who's abstaining, please?
Yeah.
So against first.
Against. All that I can see are against. Other than councillor Saunders, yeah. Thank you. And now we need to vote on the proposal. The proposal was councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Perkin, so can we all vote on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, are you abstaining?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. If we could move on to item eight, which is pesticide-free town, which is councillor Williams. Yes, thank you.
This is, well, in theory, should be a simpler and quicker motion. This motion is, Faversham Town Council calls for an end to using pesticides in all areas of land under town council control, as specified in the pesticide-free town action plan, working with external partners to achieve this. So this is just a follow-on from the So this is just a follow on from the town council adopting the pesticide free town's action plan last month, I think. And within this document, it calls to bring this motion to full council. In this instance, it's calling upon talking about land under control with this. In this case, it will primarily be allotments. And external partners would be those that we work with. So allotment committees and any contractors that would have any control on these allotments. Just to give a bit of context, I, with Adam Andrews, had a meeting with all the representatives from all the allotment committees for the, and you know, AGM. Recently, and I did go through this, this action plan, which was broadly accepted. Although obviously it's a phased in process, but I just like to hope that we get the, this motion is supported so that we can, we can continue to do the work with the allotments and indeed any other land that the town council have control over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Councillor Perkins?
I'm happy to second the motion. I think it's a very sensible one. It's a recommendation that's come through climate and biodiversity committee. So I'd like to second that motion, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. Can we vote on that? I think that looks like everyone I can see has voted, yes. Item nine, I think is councillor Irwin, I can't see him, safety of our young people.
You're on mute councillor Irwin.
Okay, it's a switch to Zoom, it's out of sync. So thank, thank you. I'm glad we accepted to have this on the agenda. So really, it's not a motion, it's really a discussion. So just to give you a bit of background into why this is on our agenda. So, you know, I think as everyone is aware, there was a stabbing on Faversham Rec on Sunday, the 11th of October, which is just over three weeks ago now. And quite sadly, it isn't the first incident of its kind in Faversham or indeed the rec. I think there's been at least one other stabbing and there has been other activity as well as antisocial activity on the rec over the course of the last year. And, you know, unsurprisingly, I think residents are rightly concerned around this, specifically around the safety of young people. And I know that's a concern that we all share as residents. I think it's really important that we discuss this for a number of reasons. You know, quite often when we talk about young people on council, it's because young people are frequently blamed as the main cause of antisocial behaviour. But I think the reality is that more often than not, young people are the victims of antisocial behaviour and the victims of serious crime. And I think that's certainly something that we have to acknowledge in our town. You know, we live in a largely peaceful community, which is one of the reasons people enjoy living here. But actually, you know, our children, the young people are probably the largest, what could be described as vulnerable group in our community. You know, they're at risk of a number of things from social exclusion, educational exclusion, from poverty. And I know the mayor mentioned the two residents who are collecting a petition for free school meals. But they're also at risk of violence as well. And I think it's something that we need to discuss and we need to understand how we're addressing it. Now, obviously, this incident happened three weeks ago. And I'm well aware that actually many members of the council, whether in Faversham Town Council or through the borough, have been working on addressing this issue. And I think it was really just a good opportunity for us to discuss it, understand what's happening, what we're doing, what we could do next and how we can best support the community through what is a very concerning time amongst concerning times for all of us. I and a number of others on the hall call had a discussion with police inspector, which I think would be useful to update the whole council on. But I've been talking for a few minutes, but I think might be, might be useful maybe if someone else would like to pick it up. And I know from that councillor Thomas has been doing a lot of work on the rec and has been doing a lot of work with Swell Borough Council, specifically on addressing issues of public safety on the rec. And I wondered whether councillor Thomas would like to maybe mention some of the initiatives which are taking place.
Lovely. Thank you councillor Irwin. Yes, speaking to the Swale Community Safety Partnership, they highlighted the fact that they have increased patrols since the summer on the rec. They were careful not to make this information too widely known due to the nature, the sensitive nature of it. However, they were comfortable that people were now made aware of it. And they believe there has been a drop in antisocial behaviour from their point of view. Recently, also the CCTV camera went up, as we saw in the local press and you probably heard from other communication channels. So that's going to be monitored now by the Community Safety Partnership at the Borough Council to see how effective the camera is. They continue to pick up on reports from Faversham Recreation Ground and they also have it on their agenda as a regular item to review. So they're continuing to review the situation on the rec, which I took as good news. As the mayor reported earlier on, they also have been working with Brodell CIC, who have links with the churches, charities in Faversham, who are now bringing the trailer, their trailer called Mel. I'm not too sure why it's called Mel, but it's called Mel. They bring it to the rec every Friday evening. And the visit that myself and councillor Perkins took and also the visit that councillor Reynolds and councillor Jackson made to the rec, we visited it and saw it being well used by young people. So that was good. And as councillor Reynolds says, depending on the demand, there is the bus, which the town council made a donation to, that could be brought to the rec as well as a mobile, I don't have used clubs the right way, it's a way of engaging. So I believe that's going to work very well. It is in its early stages, obviously with the lockdown, that's not going to be possible for a little while. But it is something that can be restarted as and when the situation allows. The other thing I was pleased to note when I visited the rec that evening was the improvement to the lighting across the rec. I.e. from the, what many people know as the Long Bridge over towards the pavilion. That is an extremely well lit avenue now and provides a good route or a safer route into town for people. Now, some people have mentioned that avenues up and down the rec, north, south on the rec aren't lit. But the best solution there is once you've used the public footpath, which is well lit, taking over to Park Road is to use Park Road to travel north and south. The other problem with illuminating too much of the rec, it will be detrimental to wildlife that we're trying to encourage on the rec. And to be honest, it is rather unnecessary. So I hope that gives you a bit of an idea on what extra things have been going on and how we are trying to tackle the issues we have in the town. Thank you.
Councillor Thomas, could I ask you, I had a very lengthy email sent to me mentioning that Swale had put so many cameras round a Tippel somewhere. This camera in the park, it identified there were so many areas that needed to have a camera. Did you say it was a mobile camera that actually surveys a larger area?
To be honest, madam mayor, I'm not 100% sure whether it can be remotely moved.
No, does it?
I would have to ask about that. I know that it can be relocated, should it be needed to, and I think that's what they mean by mobile.
Right, I thought it could look, yeah, they were identifying several points in there that should have a camera on them. And I was thinking maybe the camera does sort of do a circuit round. Right, okay.
I mean, with regard to the location of the camera, that's something that would have to be discussed with the Community Safety Partnership. Because I know there's rules and regulations of the locating of CCTV cameras.
Right. Right. Any other comments? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, madam mayor. My, thank you both councillor Irwin and councillor Thomas for your introductions there. And I must say, thank you councillor Irwin for organising the chat with the police, a lot of which we know we can't repeat. But it was very informative and it does show that they are working very hard to alleviate the problems around town, not just in the recreation ground, although obviously that is a major concern. And to note that in recent years, that the use of knives in that area seems to have increased. Not by a vast amount, but a little. But then I think that's because it's a very large park. As far as the lighting is concerned, I agree councillor Thomas, the illumination of the public footpath to the Long Bridge on Park Road is welcome. It does mean, however, I probably won't have a fox running between my legs on maybe an advantage. And yes, that did happen at two o'clock one morning. I don't know who was more concerned, me or the fox. I think we both stood and stared at each other and then realised, no, it doesn't matter, carry on. But it does mean, it does mean that the young people are to and fro to school still, even during this, unlike in the last lockdown. And I would encourage them all to go straight home and not tempt fate in the rec. Because obviously there will be other concerns for our emergency services as this goes forward. But I'm pleased that the town council has taken this on. I'm pleased to say that the mitigations that are being put in place and some of the activities that have been placed have had the backing of this town council. And obviously we will look back on further and in the future, should we be asked to do so. And I'm sure our young people are actually a lot safer than we all realise. You always hear the bad. And if you think of the number of secondary school students, you're talking three and a half thousand of them going to and fro to school in the town. And if there is, if there are incidents, they do tend to be relatively low. And I think the police acknowledge that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perkins?
I think councillor Saunders first.
I think it might have been councillor Saunders, sorry.
Okay, I wasn't so sure. Actually, I think you were in front of me. Anyway, I'll take the opportunity. Yeah, I should perhaps mention that I'm the deputy cabinet member for community safety at Swale. So I do take an interest in this, but I think it's fantastic, the work that councillor Thomas has done in working with the Community Safety Partnership to improve things at the rec. And I think the initiative with the bus is excellent as well. But to echo what councillor Martin said, I think it's important to keep these things in a context. And the overall reality, although this incident was particularly unpleasant, is that Faversham has fairly low levels of crime. And even, you know, in relative terms, low levels of antisocial behaviour. Though it's, I'm sure apparent to all of us that there's more than we would like. And certainly, you know, in other parts of the borough, there are far more serious problems with knife crime. I, I, I think there's a bigger context here, and I mean, it's a slightly political point, but that over the last 10 to 12 years, obviously, there's been massive cuts in local government and public spending. And one of the areas that suffered the most is both youth services and those services that were focused on helping those young people who were drifting into first petty crime and then on to more serious crime. And I think there's a real need to get those services re-established. And I think it's great, the stuff that the town council's, you know, trying to do at a local level. I know it's been very frustrating with the pandemic. But one of the key things in the future, I think, will be to try and link that with any extra provision that does come from both the county council and central government. And clearly, this lockdown, fresh lockdown, the pandemic we've gone through is, you know, for a lot of young people, extremely stressful. So I think that's the kind of context we need to bear in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Perkins, yes?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted, I completely agree with councillor Saunders. I think that youth services have been underfunded chronically for a long time now. And also, I'd go as far to say that that reaches back to early years provision and the help with early intervention that's also suffered under government cuts as well. Having worked in the children's centres and short start centres many years ago and going from a team of 15 to 20 staff to going to a team of four or five. So it was noticeable, the amount of money that was taken out of those services. Secondly, I just, in terms of the conversations that we've had previously, I'd just like to put on record our thanks to councillor Richard Palmer from Swale as the cabinet member for community, for agreeing to have a conversation with the town council tomorrow evening. And I hope that that is a good step forward in terms of communication with that cabinet member.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Irwin?
Just on the police interaction that we had. So similarly, I must say, I was very impressed with the inspector of the Swell Community Safety Unit. I think I emailed him asking if we could, we could discuss the issue and he replied within 15 minutes. And we had, we had the Zoom with a number of us the following day. You know, and I was quite reassured that the police are working hard on it. But again, you know, it's clear that they're underfunded and under-resourced. You know, that's not something the police inspector said because he's not political, but you know, it's quite obvious. But one element I thought was quite good news and it's probably worth sharing is there is a new town beat officer who's starting on the 16th of November. So, you know, we currently do have a, they call it a town's centre officer, a PC, Kirsten Jones. But we'll be getting some additional resource in Faversham from Minnow. So I think, I think there are certainly positives. It made me certainly me think about it a lot. And what we agreed is that we would have periodic meetings with Kent Police and Swale Community Safety Unit to discuss the topic. But there's certainly a lot happened. And I think it's worthwhile having this conversation because it's clearly something which is extremely important to all of us. And, you know, it's things like this, the breaking and the, that we do have, we do have resources at our disposal. And I think, you know, people are working hard on trying to make it better. And I do agree with councillor Saunders, you know, this is a nice, pleasant, peaceful taste to live in. But let's try, let's work hard that way.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments? No, right, we need to look at our winter newsletter with the draw.
Councillor Hook is waving.
Councillor Hook, sorry, I thought you were having a cup of tea there.
I haven't got time for a cup of tea, but my electronic hand was up. I don't know, mayor, if you can see the electronic.
No.
Right, okay, so we need to raise flesh and blood hands, that's where. I was just going to say, I feel we're a really useful discussion it is. And we didn't have a specific motion on the table, but I just thought actually having a topical discussion was really good. And I think the point about young people being sometimes stereotyped as the perpetrators of antisocial behaviour needs to be counted by the correct factual point. I think it was councillor Irwin made that actually, young people are most commonly the victims of serious crime. In fact, particularly young men are the most, young men under 25 are the most common victims of street robbery. So this is generally a nice town, but crime does affect people. Sometimes it's serious, sometimes. Uh, sometimes it's serious, sometimes it's not serious. Um, I live near one of the schools. Uh, in Faversham, I've never, in two and a bit years of living my current address, I've never witnessed any problem. Outside my house or the general vicinity, although I used to live uh in the western end of Faversham and on a daily basis. There was a group of two or three who would ride quad bikes with no helmets up and down the streets, clearly joyriding. Not the most serious crime in the world, but it didn't add very much positively to the ambience of the area. And actually, if a child, a dog walker, a person had stepped out. Uh, at the wrong time, there could have been, and this and that, also, actually, I remember one night, uh, a car was torched, actually. And some of the casework I've had with this councillor have been, and White and Crescent, actually, someone else, totally different incident, had their. Their car torch was really serious and frightening stuff that can endanger life. So we do have a a special thing. Or Park Road, actually, in my abbey ward, um, several times over the, people have told me about their doorbells. Being stolen, uh, just being pulled off the wall, which sounds minor, but if that's your doorbell. And you've then got to go to the DIY shop to buy a new one, or you've missed that really important delivery you were waiting for, someone's. Nicked your doorbell, that is beyond annoying. Actually, it's real harm to your your quality of life. So I hope what we can do, keep the dialogue with the police going. I think that's really important. And also think about what else can be done. I mean, we had um in our budget last, this current financial. A good provision for extra youth service work.
Yes.
Obviously, that's been disrupted a bit by COVID, but we need to look, make sure the next financial year, we we find a way to make that happen. Um, it's it's a not good that national government and the county council have massively cut. Uh, funding for the youth service. I mean, in about ten years ago, every town in Kent by and large had a youth centre. Those have all almost gone. There are voluntary groups like scouts and the cadets who fill the gap a bit and provide really good. Organised activities for young people and a sense of belonging, uh, which is good. Um, but I think we need to not to stop thinking over the next months and years. About what we can do to push crime and antisocial behaviour even lower, both in preventing it. So it doesn't happen and detecting it.
Yes. Prevention, thank you. I have had one or two comments made to me that, I don't know, but in the past, I believe the. Um, station, the staff at the station had a number. If they saw a group, they may be going to the abbey school, they may be going to the rec, they're coming from out of town. But if they just had a number to ring the police, uh, and they would just go and check all was well as a prevention. Um, and that used to happen. Maybe we could, I could find out more and look into that. They don't need to approach these young people getting off trains in groups. They just need maybe to phone a number. And the our patrol could just check all was done to be well. Uh, that would be a way of preventing. Uh, if they've come from out of town. So it did happen apparently in the past, but I will try and find out more about that. Any other comments by anyone? No. So we're on to the newsletter, which has had to be amended today. Because it was written before we were going to be put down into lockdown. So I'm afraid my letter was not quite. Quite there. So we have made some adjustments and I don't know if councillor Barker said, yes, you are. Please check it for me. If there's any grammar mistakes, I will be more than happy if you could correct them. Hi, that would be great. Um, does anybody have any comments on the newsletter? Maybe. Need a little while to check it.
I've just only got one comment, madam mayor, and and uh I haven't read your your piece unfortunately, so apologies for that.
Oh, please check it.
The um, the Faversham Pools.
Um, oh, yeah.
Article, which is great. Uh, uh, ma- maybe it's just me, I I find it hard to actually read the title of it. Sort of blue on a blue background or blue on the sort of water.
I think you're right. I I too don't think, it doesn't hit you.
It'd just be my vision, of course.
No, mine isn't good either. I don't want anyone else's things. You're all happy with that? Councillor Martin?
Sorry, um, yeah, commenting on the Paul's one, yeah, I think it's because they've you, they bled the background through, which doesn't work. Either use one or use a contrasting image in the actual um text work. Um, but other than that, obviously we are going into new lockdown. I've there just managed to very quickly scan. The latest edition, which came through to me literally two minutes ago. Um, and I can't see anything there that's that's in error. And I I like the rewording of the first part. Um, obviously, we don't know where we're gonna be.
No, we don't.
This um i- in lockdown and I just hope that we can continue to support the town as much as we can. But other than that, as far as the um, the actual newsletter is concerned, I'm quite happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Hook?
Yes, there are a couple of things. I I submitted an article about some empty buildings. Um, where there may be some some news on that. I'm sorry, that's not been included, but. There's a lot of other very interesting articles, so that's fine. I'll get that information out a different way. I I just want to make a comment. It really struck me that out of ten or eleven, no, we're eleven or twelve councillors, aren't we? There's only a picture of one councillor, in fact, two, in the whole of the newsletter. On page one. There's the mayor and the deputy mayor. Um, and I didn't recognise the deputy mayor at first because of the the fancy. Um, pose that that he's modelling. Um, I just wonder, I think for other articles, just looking forward. If we can include pictures of councillors, it's really beneficial to the community to get to know. What their councillors look like and who they are. I mean, all of the councillors are known by a lot of people, but you'll be surprised, there's still a lot of people out there who don't know you. And actually illustrating, uh, all of the stories in this excellent newsletter could be illustrated by a. A relevant picture with a councillor, you know, so the Ben's very good article on the pools could have. Um, picture of him at the pool, the tree article could have councillor Williams.
Yeah.
By a tree, you know, and I just think that would be, it says not something that's wrong with this one, but I just think that is always possible and it's just a suggestion. Of course, some people may not want to be shown, but it's just a suggestion I I offer.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Saunders?
Okay, thank you, um, madam mayor. I'm picking up on councillor Hook's uh point and the fact that. There was a an article he'd submitted. I think that came out with the uh original papers for for the meeting. Um, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm sure councillor Hook's doing an excellent job as our our county councillor. So it's not, this isn't a personal thing, but I I was slightly concerned. Whether the art- the article was the kind of thing we should have in the town council. Um, newsletter, because it was coming from our county councillor and we're, we're, we're the town council. And when we're um writing uh in the town council newsletter, we're writing as as town councillors. And it also felt that um it was, it was kind of about. What what councillor Hook was was doing as a county councillor with the kind of picture that you would often see. Um, in the kind of picture that I know me and councillor Jackson would put in our ward newsletters. But I'm not sure they would, it was the kind of picture um I would necessarily put in in the town council newsletter. And I'm conscious that we're moving towards the uh county council elections, towards some town council by-elections. Um, in in May and I I I'm not making any big point, but I think we we need to. Operate with sensitivity in terms of um what we have in the town council newsletter and make sure it is about the town. Uh, council, uh, rather than um perhaps bigger uh issues. Um, so that's a, that's a view.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Councillor Perkin, I thought it was, yeah.
Um, yeah, just on my article, I wondered whether I could potentially put something very quick in tomorrow, just as a slight. Adaptation to the wording, because it states that we might be heading into extra restrictions, but we definitely are.
Definitely.
Yes, councillor Perkin, that's fine. If we could have it as early as possible, because the deadline is midday tomorrow.
Yeah, no worries. I'll get it to you tonight if I can.
Thank you.
Everyone else quite happy with that? Thank you. We move on to.
Could we, sorry, sorry, could we just have a proposer and seconder just to agree that, please?
Okay, I propose we accept it. Councillor Martin, I think, is seconding. Is it? Yes. And can we ask everyone to vote? Yes, that looks unanimous. Thank you. Faversham Municipal Charities. To confirm Mr Jeff Wade's reappointment of office as a nominated trustee of the Faversham Municipal Charities. For a further four years or to receive other nominations. I do believe he is willing to stand. Um, are there any nominations? Councillor Saunders?
Um, I'm I'm not making a nomination, but I I I'm sure councillor, ex-councillor Wade. Um, is an excellent member of the of the Faversham Municipal Charities. Um, however, I think when you look at the membership of the Faversham Municipal Charities. And indeed, Benstead's charity as as well, it's over overwhelmingly dominated. By members of a particular political party who aren't actually represented at all on the town council. Uh, anymore. And um, I I would be disappointed if. Um, the majority party on the town council wasn't uh proposing to put up a. Uh, a nomination to go on to Faversham Municipal Charities. These, these charities will only. Uh, evolve and reform, um, if uh the town council's prepared to uh put forward nominations. Just, and it's the same with Benstead's. I mean, it's important that Swale put in nominations, because. The two town charities, Queenborough Fisheries Trust, the trustees actually have been. Um, nominating additional um trustees themselves. So the 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 majority of. Uh, of basically conservatives, let's be honest about this, on these committees is is absolutely overwhelming. Uh, it's uh people who um are not, in terms of age, representative of the local community. And I think it would be, you know, leave aside who it is, it's probably someone that a lot of people feel fairly positive about. I think it would be a shame if there wasn't a nomination um to go on committee from the town council. Thank you.
I do share councillor Saunders, when I went to the Alms Houses, um, AGM for their lunch, you are right. They are all past councillors of a particular party, all of them. And quite a large number, actually. So do we have anyone who would, um, councillor Martin?
I'd like to propose councillor Barker, if he's willing to do it.
Madam mayor. Uh, madam mayor, I'm happy to to stand forward, uh, be quite interested in in understanding more about the role, but I'm happy to be put forward and proposed. Thank you, councillor Martin.
I would second that. Proposal. Can we all vote then? Are we voting for a new? Can we vote? Yeah, I think.
Councillor Irwin, if you're speaking, uh, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I've just, are we, who we've, we've, we're voting on on Jeff Wade? Are we voting on on councillor Barker? I'm not sure.
Oh.
Just read it.
Councillor Barker.
Voting on.
Absolutely, okay. Yeah, yes. So we're all voted on councillor Barker. Thank you.
But madam mayor, I I think, I just wanna, I voted for councillor Barker, because I think the point is well made. That there needs to be some diversity of background and councillor Barker would, I think, make the average age of the trustees considerably younger. Uh, than they are now. And I think the attraction in having a current councillor. Um, and uh, come on, but Jeff Wade.
Oh, brilliant.
One for whom I have the utmost of respect. Uh, he's a very sensible man, a man of integrity and. Party political considerations play no weight in my mind whatsoever in voting for councillor Barker. Um, and I, for instance, Jeff Wade has been really generous with his time in supporting the neighbourhood plan. And I wouldn't want this decision to be taken by anyone as a slap in the face to him. Absolutely not. I think we really respect and appreciate.
Absolutely, quite agree with that. Um, councillor Barker?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I'd like to 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 voluntarily agree with councillor Hook, really. I've worked with with Jeff Wade.
Oh, it's brilliant.
On the neighbourhood plan and actually my sort of dealings with him have found him to be completely apolitical. Um, when it comes to matters of the test. And um, I think he, he's done a tremendous job over the years. And and very recently with us, so, um, yeah, it would be a shame to lose him in some respects, but I'm happy to take on the role.
Thank you. Do we, could I just ask the town clerk, I don't know, do we nominate somebody, will there be somebody next year that? Time will be up for?
The the next nomination um is Trevor Abram. He's due in April. So he will be, um, his position will be up for re- re-nomination in April.
Can I ask the councillors, do we wait till April? How do we all feel?
I usually get a letter from the municipal charities at the time, um, when the next nomination is due.
Right. Anyone with any comments on this? It is difficult. Yes, Jeff Wade, excellent. Um, councillor Thomas?
I'd just like to say that, yes, I agree that Jeff Wade has been very um good for the town. Uh, however, I do think we should stick with the 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 vote we just took in nominating uh councillor Barker. Uh, to the the municipal charities.
And we've all voted on that, so that goes ahead. Thank you. Um, item twelve, staffing committee. Um, obviously to receive the resignation of mayor from the staffing committee and nomination of the deputy mayor. As my replacement. Uh, I just don't feel I have the skills really or understand that really enough. So it would be better. I think councillor Martin's willing to stand. And I definitely would second that.
Um, madam mayor, you've just proposed. Do we have a seconder for that, please?
Do we? Oh, who would second? Yes, councillor Barker down there, I can see. Can we all vote on that then, please? I think that's all there. Um, area committee, item thirteen now. To agree the town council was named delegate for the eastern area committee. And it needs to be a town councillor, not a borough councillor. So I think we're, we've only got a few names here, haven't we? Councillor Barker, councillor Williams, um, who else is just town?
Councillor Irwin, councillor, councillor Reynolds.
Yes.
I'm not volunteering for that one. Yeah, councillor Thomas wishes to.
Yes, I've got councillor Thomas, councillor Martin.
Am I, are you inviting me to speak, madam mayor?
Um, would you like to speak on that? Yes.
Thank you, yes, please. Uh, I'd like to nominate councillor Williams, please, as the town council representative.
Thank you. Councillor Perkin?
I'm happy to second that of councillor Williams, would like to do it.
I'm I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. Any other nominations that anyone? No, let's spout it on that then. I think you're voted in councillor Williams. Yeah. Thank you. Thirteen and last item are receipts and payments. 13 and last item are receipts and payments. If we can resolve to approve the payments. Does someone have a hand up? No.
I can't actually find my, I can't actually find them on my computer.
They were attached to the summons as an email. So the email has all the invoices plus the payments list.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can propose that we accept that, those payments and make them as according to our normal methods.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Barker.
Yeah, I'd like to second them. I'd just like to also note with the payments that we're making a £25,000 submission to the Faversham Community Land Trust, which is one of our key budget areas. It's a good thing to note that we're trying to contribute towards a good organisation that is trying to improve community housing, really. So it's a good thing to have done and deliver some of our promises. Yeah, I'd have you to second, second.
Thank you. Can we all vote? Well done. And thank you to everyone. But can we just end on a good note? Can I please say congratulations to Becky and Anthony Hook on the arrival of their daughter this last week? And I'm amazed that he's kept his eyes open. She's only a few days old. You've got through the whole meeting, councillor Hook. So congratulations. Absolutely gorgeous baby. Yeah.
Really appreciate it, Alison. Thank you so much. That's really, really kind.
You're welcome. It's a positive note to finish on. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.